Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 23 session of the Bellingham City Council. Only one announcement tonight. The meeting of the Transportation Benefit District scheduled for Monday, February 23rd, was canceled and rescheduled for Monday, March 23rd, 12 noon in the City Council chambers. Would Ann Mackey lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Illquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Terry Bornham is excused.
Okay, we'll now go to our 15-minute public comment period. We have a few people on the list. The first one is William Christopher Meyer. Right over here, sir. Hey, Michael, hit the display hide button there. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir. Speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
I'm not here to talk about rush hour or anything. I'm here to talk about when it's kind of off time. I do a lot of driving and coming home late. How come Bellingham has so many stop signs, stoplights, red lights, rough roads? I come through at 1:00 in the morning, and I hit the guide meridian, you know, coming off the freeway, and boom, there's a red light and there's not a car in the area. What is the problem?
Thank you, sir. We'll forward that on to our Public Works Department. Yoshi Revell.
Hi, my name is Yoshi. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the City Council, Madam Mayor. We humans have known for a long time that we're connected. There's a reason that the golden rule is in every religion in some form. In some form, in every religion, it says something like, "Love our neighbors as we love ourselves," or "Do not do to another person what you do not want done to yourself." It's in every religion. And now, science is starting to catch up. We're starting to recognize that it's actually written into our DNA. There are things called altruism genes, and there are things called empathy centers that connect us to each other. It's written in our instructions that we don't survive as individuals, we survive as a group. Our DNA literally tells us to survive as a group. That's why we're so social. I read something very interesting the other day. When human beings are in a room, we start to synchronize our breathing and our heartbeats. We subconsciously pick up the breathing pattern in the room and the heartbeat pattern in the room, and we start to synchronize with each other. We're that connected. And it doesn't matter whether we're rich or poor, whether we live in the city or the county, whether we live in a home or we live in a mansion, whether we're liberal or conservative, Republican or Democrat. These things are happening all the time. It's in our instructions, it's in our DNA. And the more we get in tune with that, the more we get in tune with the fact that we survive as a group, no matter our political outlook or economic status, the sooner we start living longer and healthier lives, and the sooner world peace arrives. It's literally in our DNA to survive as a group, and eventually, we understand that the group is the entire human family. I look forward to that day. Thanks to you all for allowing me to share that with you, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Ann Mackey, followed by Dick Conneboy and Patrick McKee.
My name is Ann Mackey. I live at 1351 Humboldt Street, and I would like to ask the council to take a second look at adding methamphetamine testing to the housing inspection list that you're working on for rental inspections. At your recent discussion about the inspection program, advice was provided by building official Jim Tenner that testing for meth contamination is cost prohibitive. So out of curiosity, I followed up on that with the Northwest Clean Air Agency to find out what meth testing might cost, and I am told that a kit, which can be used for 12 tests, costs about $119. So at about $10 a test, I don't think that's cost prohibitive. I don't know how intensive that test is, but it certainly would give an indicator of some kind that perhaps the homeowner should do more investigative testing. I believe that meth use is everyone's problem. It's the addict's problem, obviously, it's their family's problems, it's our community, it's our children. It impacts our crime and our security in our community, and it ruins lives. I believe it's a public health matter that we should address. I urge the city to set the standards high and work toward a goal of becoming a meth-free community, and this would be one step in that direction. We've already seen the evidence at the motels along Sandwich Way, and almost every week I hear of another homeowner who buys a home, they get in, they become sick, or a renter that they become sick, and now they've got a meth-contamination house. We saw a group of Western students who had that exact experience. They were mysteriously becoming ill, discovered their rental had been used as a meth house. How bad is the problem? How widespread is it? I don't know, but I think we have an opportunity to find out, so I'm asking you to take a second look at the issue, do more research, and consider how well we might act on this important health matter, and I just don't think we want to miss this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Good evening. My name is Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street here in Bellingham, and I'd like to speak on the same issue. But I'm not sure that the council is aware that the county is changing its rules with regard to meth contamination and how it's treated. I see somebody going like this, so maybe you are, maybe you aren't, but maybe the public isn't. At any rate, this is partially in response to state law, which now has raised the level of allowable contamination from whatever the county's had to 1.5 micrograms per 100 square centimeters, or something of that nature. In any event, the fact is that that house on Myrtle Street that Ann was talking about, if that were to be tested under these new rules, it would not have been declared contaminated because it came under 1.5 micrograms. It wasn't until later, when they actually got the decontamination team in there, that they found out that the level was about 4.2, way in excess of the 1.5, but it never would have gotten that far. The county is also thinking about changing the rules with respect to how they deal with houses where only illicit use has contaminated the home. And that isn't too clear exactly what they want to do. I've read the revised proposed ordinance several times, and I can't figure out exactly what they're going to do, except I know that they state that they want to decrease financial and enforcement barriers to self-reporting and cleanup, as if homeowners and landlords are going to rise up as one and run down to the Health Department, declare that they want their units tested because they may get a pass. I just don't see that happening. So there's going to be a hearing on this on the 3rd of March, so I think by the time you get to look at the inspection checklist again, the county will have done something, and you'll have to deal with whatever that is. Unfortunately, I think it's a step in the wrong direction for the county. We should be tightening up the regulations on this and not loosening them up just for some thought that maybe people will start to self-report. That just doesn't happen. So perhaps the Planning Director, you know, can get some additional information on that. The county says that it's been working with the City of Bellingham, but they didn't indicate with whom, so it might be a good idea to find out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Patrick McKee, then followed by Wendy Harris.
Patrick McKee, Grant Street, in the beautiful sunny land neighborhood. About two weeks ago, I was here for a public hearing. The subject of the public hearing was new bicycle lanes on Ohio Street. After the public hearing was closed and the council began a discussion of the proposal to install bike lanes and to remove parking from one side of Ohio Street, I believe it was Councilman Weiss who began the council discussion, and Councilman Weiss said that it was very important that this bicycle infrastructure be located on Ohio Street because it was right next to Bellingham High School. And because the hearing had been closed, I was not able to respond to Councilman Weiss's statement, and as soon as he made the statement, he called for a vote. Had I been able to say something, I would have pointed out that Bellingham High School has bicycle lanes in front of it on Cornwall Avenue, it has a long-established bicycle route behind it, the Ellis Street Bicycle Route and Trail, and it has a to-be-designated bicycle boulevard alongside it to the north side on Kentucky Street. So Bellingham High School has a lot of bicycle infrastructure around it. I think this is a weakness in our public hearing process. In other words, when the council begins its discussions and talks about what has been presented to it during the hearing, the public doesn't get a chance to come back and rebuttal some of the statements that are made by the council. And I think there was in the past some kind of an informal agreement among the council that you wouldn't vote on a public hearing the night of a public hearing, and that would leave the record open so that the public could have some kind of a rebuttal after the council had its discussion. I'm hoping maybe you will go back to something like that, or you will allow the public during a public hearing to come back and make comments on the council's discussion after a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Wendy Harris. Whoa. Somebody help her. She hasn't started the timer yet, Wendy, so you're...
That was quite a tumble. Wendy Harris, I'm here to talk to you about the need to form a citizen committee to review wildlife management policies, and it's sort of a time is of the essence issue because we need to get this going so that we can have policies that can help inform our comp plan update, and I think that if we don't do this, a lot of important wildlife issues aren't going to be addressed. We have some really good wildlife policies in our development regulations for habitat conservation areas and in our comp plan for parks and for the environment, but the problem is that these policies aren't being effectuated. They're just pretty policies that sit there, and so, and none of these policies really address wildlife management issues. And that's important for a couple of reasons, and one is because of public safety. You know, increasingly, we're having conflicts between people and wildlife, people hitting deer, and, you know, there's danger not only to wildlife, but obviously to people and property that we want to prevent, and also for compliance issues, because, you know, as I'm looking at the city and the county, the big compliance issue that sticks out to me this go-around is the requirement to have open space that's dedicated to habitat connectivity, and we've done very little planning for that, and I'm talking about terrestrial and bird species. And we also have to protect biodiversity and fragmentation. So we actually need to know where the migration routes are so that, you know, when we plan, we can plan in a way that benefits everybody. You know, we plan in a way where there's more certainty, and by doing this planning now, we can reduce some of the costs for development, and we can make the mitigation programs that we have a little bit more successful. And it's also something the city wants to do because we're dealing with how to accommodate all of this growth, and that's an issue of carrying capacity. And there are four components to that. The food that's available, the water that's available, the amount of land that's available, and the environmental integrity. All of those four factors determine how many people can live on a piece of land and still keep that land healthy and keep the population healthy. And so that's why this environmental element's so important, and the number-one way to improve environmental integrity and health is to improve biodiversity. And so I'm going to be speaking next week to the county and asking them to do the same thing, and I'm hoping the city and the county and other cities can work together. And I can tell you informally, but on the record, that this request is also supported by future-wise and responsible development. Thank you. And I really hope that you'll consider this at the end of this meeting later tonight and have a discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anybody else to address the council? Seeing none, I'll close with a public comment, and we'll go to our public hearing. It's an ordinance creating an incentive program for innovative, affordable, low-income ownership projects in the single-family, multifamily residential zoning districts. The law firm of Nabbelfield and Stahlheim is here tonight, so we'll get them.
Well, you have better legal counsel on the very end of the table here, so... Actually, the only legal counsel at this table, so... Thank you, Davis Stahlheim, Community Development Block Grant Manager. So I was going to do a quick overview of what's in the ordinance before you open up the public hearing, if that's a desire of the council. So a few things. So first off, what this ordinance is about is about homeownership. It's about serving people that are low-income, earning less than 80% of area median income. In a normal speak, 80% of area median income for a family of three in Bellingham currently would be a family that earns no more than $48,080 a year in income. This ordinance applies in single-family and multifamily neighborhoods only. What this ordinance is not about is not about rental projects, it's not about multifamily, it's not about very-low-income housing or homeless housing, and also during some of the process for consideration of this ordinance, there was some confusion that this also was directly tied to city funding of projects, perhaps because the person that manages the city funding of projects became the project manager for this ordinance, but this has no relationship to city funding of projects. However, the city could participate if we had an application for funding in the future. This ordinance was first adopted back in 2004 as a demonstration ordinance, and it was subject to annual or biannual review, so every year, and then the council started asking for every two years for it to be reviewed and renewed. During those 11 years, only two projects have been developed under it by Culson Community Land Trust, 14 units at Mathi Place, and then three units on Lafayette in the Birchwood Neighborhood, Mathi Place is down in the Fairhaven Neighborhood. The ordinance did expire on December 31st, so although we started the process a little bit before the expiration, there aren't any pending projects, and so we decided to let it lapse, so there is no ordinance provisions on the books currently at the time. So some of the changes after reviewing the project that we started looking at is, one of the reasons was that with having only two projects creating 17 units in 11 years was an indication that maybe the incentives were not doing what we had hoped to, which was to encourage more development of affordable homeownership units in the city. And so we had proposed recommending adding some incentives into it. First off, eliminating the requirement that there be permanent affordability. The permanent affordability is a land trust model, and it's a great model that we have and a great organization that does it, but there's only one organization that does the permanent affordability. There are some partnerships between Culson Community Land Trust and Habitat for Humanity that have been developed over the last couple of years as well. So we recommended going to a 50-year affordability requirement, which is consistent with the Growth Management Act requirements. Growth Management Act for the affordable housing says for incentive programs for homeownership to have a 50-year affordability requirement. We also proposed to reduce the requirement that 100% of the units be affordable. The 100% of the units being affordable really made it so that only those developers that were doing affordability projects could only participate in it. Instead, we proposed creating a mix of incomes within a project to kind of create a stronger community. This mix also might help entice some private participation and less public subsidy in a project when we start looking at a mix of market-rate projects and affordable unit houses in it. We added some design and location requirements into it. We added that proximity to transit, a quarter-mile distance to transit routes, or an urban village be requirement for the program. And we added the first design standard for single-family homes, I believe, ever in the city of Bellingham. Currently, the design standards that are in place are for multifamily or rental developments primarily, and so Chris Cook had drafted some design standards to ensure that the result was in single-family appearance, and so these are new design standards that are in the ordinance. We proposed some changes to the decision-making process. The current process allows for a closed-record hearing and decision by City Council. In other words, the process currently, the hearing examiner has the public hearing, creates the whole record, and then presents it to the City Council for final decision, but the record is closed at that point, and no additional input can come into City Council. The process that's proposed has a hearing examiner granted final authority with appeal to Superior Court. Some of the key issues that are kind of left on the table from the Planning Commission, I'll point out some issues that are in the memo that I provided to Mayor Kelly and to the council dated February 11th. First is a request after the hearing had happened and decision from the Planning Commission, the York Neighborhood Association asked that a provision be added that we protect historic resources by limiting the incentives where demolition would be required. This was similar to what was added to the multifamily tax exemption ordinance, where we don't incentivize people to tear down historic resources and then grant them density bonuses afterwards, and so you have that letter and a little bit more detail in your packet. Another issue is the income mix. We had input, a wide range of input on the income mix, from 100% affordability requirement down to 51% of the units being affordable, and in the memo I provided, some examples, some density mixes that you can take a look at, and glad to answer some questions. Distance to transit was a conversation that came up in input and at the hearing in front of the Planning Commission. The recommendation was a quarter-mile. Some people had concerns that quarter-mile was too small of a distance and that it should be larger. So after the hearing, I contacted again Wacom Transit, talked to them about that, and while they still support the quarter-mile as a good standard, they were willing to also consider a third of a mile. However, we also have input that says a quarter-mile is quite a distance for those people with disabilities to get to transit, so that's something to consider. We had input on the issue of length of affordability, whether to continue requiring the permanent affordability or to look at the 50 years as a standard. And finally, we had some input on limits on location with respect to allowing this only in neighborhoods that are higher-income concentrated areas, and to prohibit the application of this within areas of sensitive watersheds or critical areas. So those are some of the issues that are still on the table, that policy decisions that the council will have to make. So with that...
Okay. Any questions or comments before we go up to the public hearing?
David, I just wanted to verify with the design standards that applies to all of the units that are built within that project or just the bonus units?
It would apply to all the units because it would be coming in as a project, so all the units would have to comply with that, yes.
Okay, and one follow-up question had to do with the scoping of the ordinance. I read in two different places, two different interpretations of whether or not this qualifies within the urban-village boundaries.
I'm going to let Mr. Nabbelfeld answer that one.
Thank you. Good evening. Kurt Nabbelfeld, Planning and Community Development Department. Currently, the proposal is to only allow this in single-family zones and multifamily zones. Our urban villages contain a different type of residential zone, and those are known as residential transition zones. Currently, it's not proposed to be allowed in urban villages under those residential transition zones.
Is there a reason for that?
I think we really looked at the original, the ordinance, and wanted to model it after that. Since this original ordinance went into place, we haven't had too many of these projects, as David mentioned. That's something that I think the council can definitely consider adding to the list tonight if we want to add it to those residential transition areas in our urban villages. That's something that would be worthy of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open up the public... Oh, Dan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stahlheim, who monitors the permanent, or whether it's permanent or 50-year affordability, who's the monitoring agency or authority?
I'd have to pause provision, but I recall what we wrote in there was that that's something that's going to have to be proposed as part of the application, and so that would be in the application, and the hearing examiner is going to have to have a mechanism for how that's going to be monitored. So it's going to be different for every project, and so rather than specifying the rules upfront, we specified that that had to be resolved as part of the decision-making process.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll now open up the public hearing. I guess the first person is Ann Mackey.
I guess being first and started out with a flag salute. Ann Mackey, 1351 Humboldt Street, and that's in the York neighborhood. I support basically the concepts of the demonstration ordinance. I'm glad to hear Dave Stahlheim say there are still a lot of decisions on the table, and I hope that means that this decision will take some time beyond tonight. One of the issues that was addressed in the staff-written report was the comment that there was not any public input that had been received at the time the staff report was written to the Planning Commission. Notices for the Commission public hearing came out in early December, and then the Planning Commission public hearing was held, I think it was the second week in January. I attended that meeting, and I have to say that for neighborhood associations, which I am very involved with, the New York Neighborhood Association, I'm a member of the board, been involved for about 25 years in that organization, I can say we shut down for the holidays. I know the staff doesn't, but we put on a very big community party in the neighborhood, horse-wagon rides, that kind of thing. Our focus really shifts in the month of December until following into January. So I found it, you know, amazing that we would be on this time track for a public hearing of this magnitude, and if I'm mistaken on those dates, you know, please correct me. So first of all, my concern is the public process, and I think it's been confusing. I attended the Planning Commission hearing, and I wasn't alone, there were other people from neighborhoods that actually thought they were talking, that the commission was talking about the home fund, which the majority of Bellingham did vote to approve, and I am one of those voters, so I'm fully supportive of creating affordable homeownership. So there was some confusion there. Unfortunately, this discussion of this ordinance that's happening tonight, I don't believe ever came through the IMNAC organization, the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission, and I think if it had, it would have gotten the much-needed attention there and an opportunity for people to ask questions. An example of a good process is the one that our Planning Director, Mr. Seppeler, is overseeing right now. It's a genuine public process on the topic of accessory dwelling units, and he's organized a focus group that includes a wide range of stakeholders in the community, and that discussion has had a preliminary time at IMNAC, and then it's scheduled to come back to IMNAC, and there'll be a public meeting, kind of a workshop at the come back to MNAC, and there'll be a public meeting, kind of a workshop at the Planning Commission. So I think people are, I know I am, and I think others that I've talked to, are really appreciative of a genuine public process. So that's my first caution on this one, that I, I think there's just too much confusion. Secondly, I'd like to talk about our mutual goals. Obviously, you know, I'm a supporter of affordable homeownership. I live in a neighborhood, York, that has mixed incomes, has an amazing demographic of retirees, working families, professionals, and Western students, community college students, and just, you know, single adults who are there. It, it's a great neighborhood. I appreciate another element of this amendment that will be in design standards to these single-family homes. I think that's unique, and I think that's very welcomed. But I am concerned about some other things that I think are at risk. Number one, the decision process, the approval process, being removed from you, the city council. You know, I've been here for a few years, and I've watched, especially in the last two years, a really engaged community talking about numerous housing projects, Patton Trails, Ambling Corporations, University Ridge Project, the Sunnyland Neighborhoods Department of Transportation property, and of course, Chuckanut Ridge. And there have been a few of those that you may have ruled on that I don't personally agree with, but that is your elected responsibility, and I don't want to see you relinquish that to, to the hearing examiner, who I believe has several municipalities that she is overseeing at this point. Bellingham is just one of them. I think the second risk is the unknown elements of the zoning changes that are embedded in this amendment, and those are issues related to setbacks, reducing parking requirements, and especially the 50% density increase for these properties. I don't really understand how that will work, is that if you have two houses on two lots owned by the same developer, they then get to put another house in the backyard. I have a really good example of that in the 1300 block of High Street in New York neighborhood, and I failed to bring you a photograph of that tonight, and I will email that to you. Actually, it's gonna be featured in our neighborhood newsletter. It's an example of two homes with multiple units, up and down, multifamily, where another house with multiple units was picked up from elsewhere in the city, brought down the alley and plopped in the backyard. Eliminates the open space, you know, creates a huge parking problem, not to mention noise, congestion. We call it the poster child of overfill. So that's my concern on this project as we kind of wipe the slate clean of what I think are inherently good zoning regulations for single-family neighborhoods, we're gonna wipe that clean. As Councilman Weiss asked the question about urban villages, that was one of my first questions at the Planning Commission hearing. I think urban villages are concepts that the neighborhoods bought, have bought into and thoroughly support. We have eight acres in New York neighborhood that are part of the Sammish Way Urban, Urban Village. We want to see not only, you know, high-rise apartment construction for, you know, Western students or even condominiums, more commercial on the ground floor, nice big tree-lined boulevard. We want to see some affordable housing and the toolkit type of housing that could be used exactly in an urban village like the one on Sammish Way. So I think it's very unfortunate that, that somehow that's, that's not possible. So in conclusion, I think the passage of the tax initiative for the home fund shows how dedicated the majority of our citizens are to finding solutions to our housing crisis. I believe we all want to see more affordable homeownership. I'm hoping that some of these rentals that have been taken off of the market, kind of been locked up as student housing, will, through a process of whether it's the rental inspections or whatever, will come back on the market. Those are the old fixer-uppers that a lot of us, when we were young, were able to buy, put that sweat equity into it, had our first home. We have a lot of those, more than 50% in New York neighborhood, our houses are rentals just like this. And I would love to see them come on the market. Families have been driven out of these inner-city neighborhoods like ours. They simply cannot afford rents of 1,500 to $2,000 a month. That's what they're expected to pay now, and it's, you know, those houses have been turned into basically illegal rooming houses. Yes, we need to house our students. Yes, we need to find solutions to housing, the housing crisis. Affordable housing is one of the council's strategic initiatives. I don't want to see you give that up to, you know, delegate decisions on this to some other person or another body. I really want you to embrace that as your responsibility. I think that's why we elected you, one of the many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Lisa Anderson.
Good evening, council. Last week, I, oh, sorry, Lisa Anderson, York Neighborhood. I'm here speaking as the York Neighborhood president. Last week, I sent on behalf of the York Board a letter requesting the inclusion of the text to amend the Bellingham Municipal Code Title II, 20 and 21. Rather than read the contents of the city's multifamily housing code, the 17.82.030, Section 8, the Historic Resource Protection, I want to reiterate our support to protect the historic housing. I think including this text will definitely help de-incentivize the, the tear-down of current housing stock. As Ann had mentioned, we are for affordable housing. Many of us have bought fixer-uppers, moved in. We would like to see more of that eventually within our neighborhoods. I would like to see housing built that people and families can actually afford and live close to the city. I think that's all very desirable. But it's also really important that we don't tear down current housing that is part of our community's heritage. And so I think by adding that text will definitely create a little bit of a buffer so that people are not going to basically have a win-win. If I could go in and tear down five old historic or potentially contributing historic housing to put in maybe more houses by consolidating that tract of land, I would, if I could get a great tax deduction for it. But if that tax deduction is not there, or not tax deduction, but just not having to pay the additional tax, then perhaps I wouldn't look at doing that. I would look at a different land to develop. Kind of off of being the neighborhood board as just Lisa homeowner currently, Ann's correct, we didn't have sufficient time to really be able to read through this as a board and really kind of debate the better points and also be able to come forward with a full round of what we'd like to address. Thank goodness Ann has done thorough research on her end, but I do think a lot of us would agree with it. I, as an individual, am not comfortable with the decision being taken out of your preview on how this all works. I think we elect seven great community members and neighbors to be able to vet out all of this information and hopefully come to consensus on what's best. I personally was in a situation where my property was being rezoned as part of the urban village, and I went to all of the planning meetings, I went to all the planning council meetings, I spoke up, brought in letters, and it kept getting pushed through. And it wasn't until I stood before some of you and then some of the people who have moved on and really spoke my case with heart that you guys collectively discussed it and then asked for that section to be taken out of, kind of more of a multifamily zoning and remain single-family. And I don't think that would have happened if I just spoke to one person. And it was a really big deal because my house has been my main investment. So I think a body of seven sometimes can come up with a better good for the community than sometimes one individual, so please reconsider that part and don't take yourselves out of the decision. As Ann said, we as voters try to make the right choice of who we think is going to represent us and our needs, and we don't necessarily get to have that say about the hearing examiner. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Steve James.
Good evening. My name is Steve James. I live on Undying Street in the Puget neighborhood.
Mr. James, use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get down to my height. My name is Steve James. I live in the Puget neighborhood. As a little bit of background, I am on the Puget Neighborhood Association. I am the MNAC representative for Puget. I'm not here speaking on their behalf now. I'm speaking on my behalf as a citizen, and also I'm not used to speaking in public forum, so the quavering voice, I hope will be excused. I'm, also, I'm getting over a cold. I did review online. I'm a latecomer to this show, and I, and I did review online a lot of the documents and what had been submitted, submitted to council, and I listened a lot to what people had to say. And there's a lot of details and a lot of specifics on this thing, and I don't want to speak to you tonight about details and specifics. What I want to do is use a tool that I was taught in my 20 years working with the National Park Service, is that when we're looking at projects and when we plan projects and when we're in the middle of projects, was to periodically work the other way and go from specifics back to general, rather than from generals to specifics. And in doing so, we would always go back to the Organic Act, which formed the National Park Service and really has two major parts to it. One is to protect and preserve, and the other is to provide for the public enjoyment. And if you think about those for a minute, they're at conflict all the time, and it's in that conflict, in balancing that conflict is how you can come to a good answer that provides for both, so that one doesn't override the other. And I think that's really what's going on in many of the ways right here and now. This city has made a commitment to provide housing for people, and I think that's a noble goal. But this city and the neighborhoods in it have made a, a commitment to protect and preserve the neighborhoods because that's what makes Bellingham so unique. We have these unique neighborhoods that need to be protected and preserved. And I'm hearing a conflict between those two things with this particular ordinance and some of the things that are going on now. I applaud the efforts to provide for community housing, and, and this is one tool that I think can be used, but it's just a tool, and it's just one. I, I would like to see the council attack affordable housing on a broader scope rather than piecemealing it through a little ordinance here, a little ordinance there. Let's talk about, you know, a real task force or a plan to, to provide affordable housing within the inner city. Just, I've read some of the documents they talk about. This does provide some infill to the city, and that's a noble goal. Well, infill, I hate sprawl. But the amount of infill that's provided by this project, as opposed to the amount of harm that can happen to some of the neighborhoods, is far outweighs the balance. You know, we're not gonna gain a lot of infill from doing this thing. The past performance shows that. We're not getting a lot of people to, but some of the harm that could happen to some of the neighborhoods, mine or York or some of the other historic neighborhoods, is huge. And we need to balance that and, and protect that. And it's not just the historic homes in these neighborhoods that make these neighborhoods unique, it's every structure and every home in there. That's what makes them unique. We are not, you know, this cookie-cutter kind of city, and I love that. And any standards that we develop for this needs to recognize that. And so uniform standards don't always work. I mean, uniform standards need to reflect the fact that we're not uniform, you know, and our, and our diversity is what makes us great. So I'm urging you to not use a Band-Aid fix, and this, this could be made into a Band-Aid fix. Others have spoken, and I want to speak also to the process, and, and again, I'm a part of a neighborhood association, and this all came about while we were in the middle of our holidays. We don't even have any meetings during this period of time, and by the time I got wind of it, it's before the council. I think the new planning director and the mayor have done a really good job of trying to change the way that we handle process for planning and developing this city. And a classic example is the ADU, proposed ADU workshops, where a public can come in and talk to staff way before, you know, ordinances are even crafted. I think we're doing the same thing with the, with the general management plan that we're trying to, and comprehensive plan that we're gonna change. And I see no real urgency that we couldn't take this process that we're in now, slow it down and back it up a little bit and get some public input and some neighborhood input into how is this gonna affect us and how can we achieve that balance so that when, when the ordinance is finally done and over with, it not only works towards providing more public, or more affordable housing, but also works to protect, protect those unique neighborhoods that we all live. I thank you for letting me address you, and again, pardon my rambling. I'm not practicing this, but I am passionate about it.
We're used to rambling up here, sir, so you're all right.
Then I stand among experts.
You stand among rambles. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patrick McKee.
Patrick McKee, Grant Street, Bellingham. I'd like to start out talking about the quarter-mile requirement from a transit line. I think that started out as a quarter-mile from a go-line, a 15-minute go-line, and now, now I think it's gone to any Wacom County transit line in the, in the proposal that's before you. So that pretty much covers just about the whole city. But my question is, why have that requirement? Why not just say anywhere within Bellingham where you have the infrastructure, you know, the water and the sewers and the streets and the police protection, fire protection? Why not just have this program, someone able to apply for it anywhere in the city of Bellingham? If you don't want to go that far, maybe you could have some kind of a point system where you could give points to an applicant who's located closer to a go-line or something like that. I just think you should include all areas of, of the city capable of applying for this program. The second thing, I, I think part of this program is an elimination or a reduction in impact fees for houses built under this program. I disagree with that. I think we've had this debate in the city. Growth needs to pay for growth. When you hook up to our water system, when you hook up to our sewer system, you've gotta pay the impact fees. And it's unfair to all the residents who have paid those impact fees over the years, and it's unfair to current residents who will have to make up for the loss of revenue that is gotten from these impact fees to maintain our water systems and sewer systems and highway systems and park systems. So I don't think there should be any reduction in the impact fees. You might think about some type of a program that would allow a new homeowner to make payments over 10 years to pay the impact fee, something like that, but elimination of the impact fees, I, I do not support. Then there is Section F of this new ordinance, which is request for regulatory modification. It says in that section, an applicant can request to modify the lot size, the street frontage, the yard setbacks, the parking regulations, lot coverage, usable open space, and it doesn't set any limits. It doesn't say minor changes. It's throwing up for grabs the whole zoning code in every neighborhood. And this, this, in my opinion, is too sweeping. It, it, it would allow for major changes that could change the character of our neighborhoods. These things like street frontage and yard setbacks are what makes our neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that they are, gives them the look and character that they have. This, this is too big a change. There, there needs to be some refinement to this, more control of this. The next thing I'd like to talk about is moving this to the hearing examiner for, for a final decision. The, the changes that are proposed here to, to neighborhoods are like neighborhood plan changes. They're like zoning changes. These are things that are left in other parts of the municipal code to the city council. These are decisions that the city council should be making. These are decisions that people, as other speakers have said, should be able to come to you and talk about. We shouldn't turn these decisions over to an itinerant rent-a-hearing examiner, which we have right now, who doesn't know my neighborhood, who doesn't know the character of my neighborhood. These kind of decisions should be made by the city council. They shouldn't be turned over to, to a hearing examiner. The last thing I would, I would request to be added to this bill is residency requirements for those candidates who are applying for, for a, say, a new home under this proposal. There is an affordability housing crisis in many parts of Western Washington. I think what we're trying to do here is focus on solving the problems within our city of affordable housing. So I think it's appropriate that you those candidates who are applying for, say, a new home under this proposal. There is an affordability housing crisis in many parts of western Washington. I think what we're trying to do here is focus on solving the problems within our city of affordable housing. So I think it's appropriate that you develop some kind of residency requirements for those who are applying for the benefits of this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Michael, could you hit that button again? We have a ghost in here that keeps pressing the button.
Wendy Harris, I don't support this proposal, and I really want to emphasize how much I support taking care of the needs of the homeless, the disabled, you know, people that need support. That's what we're here for as a community. So it doesn't make me happy to take this position. But, you know, I'm listening to some very good public comments, and what I'm hearing is this overarching theme from people that we strongly, as a community, support helping the homeless and the low income, and the disabled, but we don't support infill everywhere. And I have to go along with that. And more specifically, I'm concerned about the fact that we're only exempting the provisions of this requirement, this proposal, from the Lake Wacom watershed. And we have to recognize that infill's not appropriate in a lot of places outside the watershed as well. And I would like to see, if this moves forward, that there be a prohibition against infill in critical areas, in sensitive watersheds, and in our shorelines. Because those are not appropriate places for intense residency and more development. And I'm saying that as an environmental activist who understands that, you know, environmental justice and social justice and economic justice, that they're all interlinked, and we have to have all three of them. And so, I'm asking for protection of all three of those. So please consider the fact that we need to protect our critical areas, we need to protect our wildlife. And the bigger question I have is, why are we talking about this and having a public hearing about this now, when we're in the midst of our comp plan update? The whole purpose of the comp plan update is to have comprehensive planning, and that's the opportunity where we can sit down, as a community, and identify specifically the areas that are appropriate for infill. And that seems to me like a more sensible way to go about this kind of planning, is we're all, you know, as a community, we all agree that, you know, these are the areas that are going to be appropriate for infill, rather than, you know, waking up one day and there's people building next door. And, you know, I also want to say that I'm a former homeowner, I'm now in an apartment, and I'm struggling to find affordable housing. So I'm not, you know, everything that I'm saying is against my own financial interests, but I'm saying this because it's the right thing. So please protect our critical areas. And the other concern I have, which is a little more broad scale, is that you really have to consider homelessness more as part of a greater social trend, where there's growing discrepancy between the rich and the poor. And a program where we're giving a lot of public subsidies to developers to come in and develop housing for the poor, really doesn't help reduce the social stratification that really gets to the heart of the problems that we're having. And I'd like to see a program where we really address these economic and social stratification issues. And, you know, benefits for private developers doesn't take us there. I remember when I was a student at Berkeley, I was a member of the Student Housing Co-op. And we had the largest student-owned and student-run housing in the country. And so I think one of the keys to having a successful homeless housing program is to get the homeless involved and self-empowered by being, you know, involved in the regulations, and the running, and the ownership of this program, and invest in the people that are actually going to live there, instead of the developers that are going to come in and build. So I'd rather see this done on that kind of a process. And I know that there's other cities that have attempted to address homeless problems with concepts such as micro-cities and tent cities, and I think we're looking at something more permanent, which is good. But, you know, the concept of microhousing or small housing would make things more affordable, and we could have some sort of governing board of the people that are part of this community. And I think that would be a good thing. I mean, it helped me, when I was a student, you know, learn about responsibility and learn to care about the place that I was living. And I'm just throwing that out as an alternative. So please think carefully about larger issues, and protect our sensitive lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. That's all who signed up. Anybody else? Line up over here, and we'll hear some more testimony. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dean Fearing, I'm the executive director at Colson Community Land Trust. We are the only organization that's used a demonstration ordinance to date, and I really would like to applaud the city and thank the city for being such strong advocates for affordable homeownership in the city. To date, we've used the demonstration ordinance, as David mentioned, two times. We've helped over 160 families throughout Wacom County buy homes, and then we're keeping them affordable for future generations. We're seeing housing prices go up at an alarming rate again. When I bought my first home back in 1996, I was only able to do that because I was in the Navy and I had my VA loan to use to help me buy that home. But day after day, we have people coming to our office who are struggling to come up with a down payment to buy a home, let alone try to keep up with the pace that housing prices are rising at. So I'd like to highlight our second project that we've used demonstration ordinance funding for, because it comes to my comment about the quarter-mile to transit stop. This is a project we're doing in the Birchwood neighborhood. It's three homes. We divided two lots into three lots. They're small lots in a great neighborhood, close to services. It's right around the corner from Bellingham Technical College. The one thing that this project isn't close to, however, though, is a bus stop. It's on this map, I can show you, it's just over. This way. There we go. You can see on the map here, this is Bellingham Technical College. The closest bus stop is in front of the Technical College, which is just over a half a mile away from this project. So if this condition were in place for this project and using the demonstration ordinance, we wouldn't be able to divide these two lots into three lots and build three homes in this project. Further, you know, Colson, it's important for us to have a lot of tools in our tool belt for building affordable housing, and the demonstration ordinance is certainly an important tool to have to do that. Well, we've only used it two times. There are opportunities that we can see in the future to use it, but if we put a condition in place requiring it to be a quarter or a third of a mile from a transit stop, it suddenly takes large portions of the city out of scope for doing projects like that. We closed on two and a half acres up on the Telegraph Road later this summer. It's about, it's just under a half a mile from a bus stop. So unless, we're not planning to use a demonstration ordinance for that project, but if we were, it would be a huge barrier to getting the density that we need. So I'd ask the council to consider the quarter-mile or a third of a mile to a transit stop, either relax that altogether, or maybe make it a half a mile from a transit stop, to give a little more flexibility to a project like ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else wish to testify? Come on up.
Again, Dick Conneboy, South 46th Street in the Samish neighborhood. I was getting cognitive dissonance ringing around in my head, listening to all this. And I think back, last week, when I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the rezone of 801 Samish, from residential single to commercial planned. And two, almost two acres of really nice real estate, that the Planning Commission has recommended to you to turn into a commercial venture, just for the sake of one buyer. And this is a lot that's right across from the Elks Lodge. It's almost walking distance over to Seehome Shopping Center, it's on a bus line. And ideal for infill, ideal for people for living. And yet, we're doing all this stuff, as Wendy said, all disconnected. We've got a couple other rezones going on, the one on Ashley, and the other one across Area 9 from 801 Samish. All great spots for small, affordable homes. And we'll be probably putting up apartment buildings there with retail underneath. No promise that the apartment buildings will be affordable. And so, again, we've lost those forever, for small, affordable housing, for people who really need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Any further comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, but keep the written record open, and bring back the council for your wishes. Hopefully, we'll have a work session or two, but it's up to the council, so. Jack?
I'm not sure if Pat's here or not, but...
Come on up, Patrick.
Hi, Pat. I'm going to take you up on your offer, because I'm probably one of the biggest advocates of having public hearings held, and then have a work session afterwards, if there's conflicting opinions. And I want to apologize to you for my actions of the last meeting, when I was the one that actually called for a vote on a public hearing, where you did go and provide conflicting opinion to what the recommendation was. And I should have actually asked for a work session, I didn't. I went and did what I did, so I want to apologize to you personally. And with that, I, because of the, a number of things that we've heard, I would say that we should go and, I would move that we would move this issue into the Planning Committee at a work session.
Okay, motion been made, accepted. Any discussion?
Good idea.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried, 601. Councilman Borman excused. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
And actually, because it's so fresh, I'm curious as to whether or not the staff has any immediate responses to the public comment that we've received, that you want to address now, or if you want to do it at the work session.
The, you know, I think we can do a lot of that at the work session. The one thing that did jump out is, I guess we didn't talk about it a lot, was the clarity about impact fees. And this ordinance has a section that talks about waiver of impact fees, but the mechanics of that is actually in an entirely different section of code, and there's no waiver of impact fees unless the council does a separate ordinance to do that, to backfill those dollars. And so, you could take that out, and it might be a good idea to take that out of here and let those other provisions of code. And we hadn't thought about that before. The other thing is, there was one comment about requests for a regulatory modification. I want to be clear that we haven't done any changes. This is the same ordinance, except for those things I highlighted that have been in effect since 2004. So I do want to be clear that, you know, when I highlighted the issues in the memo and the issues that are coming up, those are new issues. But otherwise, this is the same ordinance that's been in effect for 11 years now. So that's not clear when you present an ordinance, and it looks like it's all new. But it has been on the books for 11 years. So I just want to make sure that the council and the public understand that as well.
Okay. Kurt, you want to say anything?
No, I definitely agree with David, and I think the public, that the work session will be a great opportunity for us to clarify a lot of things, because I think there's a lot of, at least from the comments that I heard tonight, there's a lot of misconceptions about what we're trying to do here. So we'll have a good response to all the comments you heard tonight.
Michael?
It wasn't clear for the motion. Are we referring this to the Planning Committee, I assume?
Yes. Great. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Jack?
Yeah, in listening to the comments, it seems clear that, maybe at the work session, you could help flesh this out a little bit better, about exactly what the demonstration ordinance is, that it's an implementation ordinance, that has this history, and what we're doing it, and that it actually, you know, to Wendy's comment, that it actually is implementing the comp plan that we currently have. And there's reasons for it to be the way it is, and that there are also reasons why we were interested in having it altered and amended. So, you know, maybe, I guess maybe more of a detailed discussion of that at the work session, just so that everybody's on the same page as to exactly what this demonstration ordinance is, and what happens when we make it permanent, if we choose to adopt this.
Okay. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody. We will now go to our council standing committees. First committee is Public Works, Public Safety, and pinch hitting for Terry was Roxanne Murphy.
We had two agenda items in our committee this afternoon. The first was an interlocal agreement with the Wacom Council of Governments to help fund the Wacom Smart Trips program. This came with a mixed recommendation from our committee, but I will so move.
Second.
No, I know you weren't going to do it.
Yeah, I know.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, just, could you just explain what it is you're moving? I just, I think you left out that we're moving approving an interlocal agreement. I just thought it should be clear when we vote today.
No, I said, we discussed an interlocal agreement with, between the City of Bellingham and the Wacom Council of Governments to help fund the Wacom Smart Trips program. Just a little bit of information, this is $25,000 to the Wacom Council of Governments toward the planning and implementation of the Smart Trips program. This includes things like bike-to-school and workday, outreach that goes out to grade school and young kids, to train them on ways that you ride the bus, and just general education and incentives to community members to support alternative trips. So that's the recommendation of what we would help fund.
Any further discussion?
I want to piggyback off of something Jack said this afternoon, because last budget session, I tried to take our funding out and send it somewhere else. But I think you articulated it better by taking the $25,000 and maybe spending it on bicycle lanes, ped pro, whatever. My point is, coming from the company that I work for, we have got great participation from commuter trip production. But we got reams and reams and reams of material sitting in the main office that isn't going anywhere, because everybody is using the program. So I think the seed money that we've planted over the years got the program running. I think the program's running great, and I agree. Taking out big, huge newspaper ad isn't a good use of money. But I think we have laid the seed work where we have become a Smart Trips city already. And I think that money could be used for something else. So I'm going to be voting with Councilman Weiss against this, because I think we can find different ways of spending that money for projects in the future. If you look at four years, it's $100,000. So that's where I'm at. I know it's a great program, but I'm hearing from some other companies that it's becoming a paperwork nightmare. You have to, you know, to be involved in the program, you have to meet certain guidelines. But I can tell you from experience, we have a lot of people that are using this program, they just don't want to be bothered with the program anymore, they're just going to do it. So that's just me.
So, hearing no more debate? Oh, pinky.
Can I just ask a question? Because I'm still educating myself on how funding works. Is there any opportunity for us to maybe decrease the amount, or do we have to start all over again?
Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We have been decreasing it over the years. So the city, at one point, was contributing $100,000 a year. It was a much bigger program, and I think, probably speaking to some of the things that both Gene and Jack spoke about, either this afternoon or this evening, that the program is well-established, and is, you know, has good participation, and it has been scaled down over the years. And our funding has gone along with that, from $100,000 down to the $25,000. I think from the administration's perspective, in 2015, you know, there was a commitment with the COG, through the policy group, to, as I mentioned earlier today, direct some of the federal highways money to make the program whole. And they have tried to reduce the size of the program, so that they could fund it within a $250,000 budget. Just a couple of years ago, this was over a $600,000 a year budget. So it has come down largely because of the loss of state and federal grants, so it was out of necessity. But at the same time, the program, I think, is heading in the right way from a size perspective. I think what we would recommend... I think what we would recommend is to continue to work with the COG through 15. You know, bring these concerns that have been addressed at the council back to the council of governments, and talk about the future, and potentially address something in the 16 budget, you know, the supplemental budget. So that would be staff's recommendation.
And I think that Ted basically has expressed what I would believe would be a helpful thing to do, because this was discussed very heavily in the COG. There was some reluctance on funding based on concerns that the council had raised before. And also, the county has not put any money into this directly. So there was always the idea that we all would jointly fund this. We have to be very clear that over the course of the years, Bellingham has been the biggest recipient. And if we choose not to fund it, then, you know, it probably will go away. So we might want to spend this year seeing if there's anything that we believe is, the money is better spent for. And I understand Jack's interest in infrastructure. That's why I'd like to have the TBD discussion that we all need to have. So I guess I would ask for your support for this particular allocation, and then during the supplemental budget, we can do what Ted expressed, which is basically, do we want to continue giving this money, or do we want to use it for something else, or do we not want to? I don't think that we've had that discussion as a council.
Jack?
Yeah, I guess in response to Pinky, Pinky, we did go and approve this $25,000. This is just simply authorizing the contract to spend it. So we've already taken that action. I will be voting against it primarily, because I also voted against the budget component of that. But my question, I guess, is that when we approved the two-year budget, did we approve the second year of this program, or did we just approve the first year with the understanding we would do a 16 review?
I would suggest the latter. I think we've always had annual agreements with the COG. I think, you know, even though a biennial budget was passed, and there's probably a placeholder within the 16 budget for this type of an interlocal agreement, I would still say that they've always been annual agreements, that it would be within the council's, you know, direction already to say, let's review it within the 15-year. If we take action, it would have to be, you know, if we don't do anything, I think you could say that it's in the 16 budget. You'd still have to pass an interlocal agreement for 16. And so you always have, as a council, that role to pass it. But I think what I'm hearing is go back to the COG at the very least, discuss the future of the program, and potentially a further reduction or a different model in 16.
Okay, Dan?
Mr. Carlson, I'm wondering how this program is used in our public schools in terms of educating students on the use of bike pedestrian?
The primary focus over the last couple of years has been at the middle school level. And so there is a, you know, there's a classroom segment where folks from the Council of Governments work with the instructors at the middle schools, go into the classrooms. They really do focus on, you know, teaching the students how to get around town using alternative transportation. How do you, how do you read a bus map? How do you find, you know, use the sources on the web from WTA? How do you get from point A to point B, either by taking your bike or taking transit? And focusing on that age of student, where the belief being that they really do have some mobility at that point, and ability to get around town using transit, or, you know, the bike racks on transit, or just riding or walking. So that's been the emphasis over the last couple of years. Kim Brown, our Transportation Options Coordinator, works very closely with the COG on the messages that go out to the school, and try to incorporate those into our own education efforts that are, you know, certainly we have policy direction from Bicycle Master Plan on where the emphasis should be. And as well as working with the Police Department, who has, you know, always had some education around bicycle safety, you know, mobility for the students. So they do work together. But the emphasis has been at the middle school level.
Thank you. Okay, Michael?
This afternoon with regard to this, one of my questions had to do with how do we measure the effectiveness of this? And my concern is that we, that the program, which we're supporting only one-tenth of the program, is directed well. And so in a certain sense, I think, Gene, I'm going to agree with you, even though I'm going to support this particular expenditure, because the program needs to change, because we have, you know, the program has already reached a certain audience, and there's new audiences that need to be maybe reached in a different way. And I think I'm pretty much agreeing with you, Jack, in a certain sense, is that, you know, certain forms of broad advertising may not be the best way to achieve the goal for the next group of people we need to reach. So, I mean, I think I'm pretty much in agreement with you, but I'm going to support this measure and look forward to the, you know, discussions the administration's going to have with the COG about making sure it stays effective.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion carries by the skin of the teeth, four to two. We had a backup plan. If it would have been three to three, we would have waited till Terry, so. Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Roxanne.
Okay, and our last agenda item was a project update. There's going to be an upcoming closure of Chestnut and Bay Streets. Excuse me. The Public Works Department is going to be starting a construction project that will replace the bridge that's at the intersection of Chestnut and Bay Streets. And what this construction project will do is it will rehabilitate and remove the current posted weight restrictions on the bridge. The project will also include paving, sidewalk, and bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So the bid award is anticipated to be in March of 2015. And we talked about how we need to do good outreach about this project, and especially with the businesses in the area that will be affected by it, because we're going to have to do a little bit of rerouting. We're going to do plenty of outreach about that. And this is for information only. Committee members, is there anything you wanted to add? Okay, that was for information only, so end of committee.
Okay, thank you, Roxanne. We will now go to committee of the whole. We had five items. The first item was this semi-annual report of the Bellingham City Council, our hearing examiner, Sharon Rice. She gave us a report on her cases so far that she's done this year. And I really want to reiterate, you know, one of the reasons we picked a hearing examiner back years ago was because of the overload it put on the council as far as land use decisions and final plat, short plats, all this kind of stuff. And I know there's pushback on the affordable housing thing with hearing examiner, but I can tell you, as a longtime veteran, the hearing examiner was one of the best things we ever did. And I wouldn't want to see us ever change any of that, because when we have the discussion about the affordable housing thing, I want them to articulate exactly how that's used in exactly the same way we use it all the time. That's where you go when there's big discussions like that, because they have the legal minds to take a look at it, not from a political point of view, but from a legal point of view. And I can tell you, we went through, Mr. Johnson's smiling up there, he went through some of those hearings here, and they weren't scientific. They were nothing but political battles, and it was horrible. And I don't ever want to see that again. So she is a great hearing examiner. I've heard good things about her from people that have gone before already. So I just want to reiterate that that was one of the best decisions we ever made. So I don't want to see that change anytime soon. The second was a bid award for Boulevard Park sewer improvements, bid number 14B-2014. And we had a low bidder. The, on page 77, the amount that was written in was wrong. The low bidder was Ram Construction for $587,918.41. The Boulevard Park currently has two aging and failing sewer pumps serving the public restrooms, as well as the building leased to commercial tenant Woods Coffee. These two pump stations fail on a regular basis, leading to closure of facilities and restricted use. This project will replace the two small pump stations with a gravity line and a new pump station at north end of the park. It's recommended that the council award the contract, the apparent low bidder, Ram Construction, and I so move. Second. Who made the motion? I did. My goodness, where's my head at? Just a minute. Jack will remember this. Do you remember this?
Yes.
I think I hit it too hard all those years ago. Okay, the motion been made and seconded. All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 601, with Councilman Berman excused. The final was a presentation to council regarding the marine nearshore connectivity final report, an update on the Bellingham Bay juvenile salmon assessment. Renee La Croix gave us a good report. I won't go into it in detail. The fiscal impact was a marine nearshore study for $49,000 and a juvenile Chinook study for $149,000. As always, Renee and her group do a wonderful job on that end of it, so I won't go any further on that. It was a great report. Also, we approved minutes from February 9th. Committee, anybody want to bring up any older new business they brought up this afternoon? Oh, yes, we have evening minutes from February 9th, 2015. Move approval?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 601. Councilman Berman is still excused. Anything on their old new business? Okay, Mayor's, uh, Jack?
Just because I think it has importance to the community to understand what we're doing. One thing I brought up earlier today was that our Public Works Committee will, one of the things we proved as a council is that our Public Works Committee will be addressing the issue of traffic calming in the community associated with a policy, and also whether or not, whether or not we actually start up a traffic calming type of program again, the way that we used to years ago.
Yeah.
And so we'll have further discussions on that soon, within the next couple of months. And one other thing was that, Brian, were you going to provide just a very quick update on the PEG stuff? Or the mayor was going to? Okay, then I will do that. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Vart.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of public announcements in regards to, there will be an open house for the Alabama Corridor project, and that will be on March 4th between, at 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Roosevelt Elementary School. So anybody who wants an update on the Alabama Corridor, I will be there. I hope you will be as well. And also let you know that our signature event that we sent out on RFP foreclosed on February 13, and we got 18 applications, so we're very excited about reviewing those. So thanks to all who submitted.
Okay, anything else? Roxanne?
I just want to thank the council, because we agreed we'll be hosting a future work session in committee of the whole regarding paid and protected sick leave. We don't know when, but soon.
Okay. Mayor's report.
Well, luckily for you, I don't have a whole lot to report. First of all, I did mention in new business during the afternoon meeting that on the 9th and the 23rd of next month, we will be doing work sessions with the council on the county's proposal for the new jail that they want to put on the ballot in November. So it'll be an opportunity to get in detail about what the proposal is that they have, and answer your questions, et cetera. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. I'll let Brian do PEG next, and then I want to talk about what I did over my summer vacation.
I don't think so. Go ahead.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. The short answer with respect to BTB10 is a technology issue. I had a chance to connect with Dale before, or after our meeting earlier today. They believe the issues that you both referenced, that Jack referenced from a week ago, and Gene, you noticed yesterday, might be related. They're looking into that. The first one is essentially an encoding issue. The server was unable to process the video that they had programmed for it. I think they were able to address that. So that was, you know, 10 days ago. The one from yesterday is more of a, I believe the server, for lack, I'm not an expert on this, the server froze and they were unable to unfreeze it. I think everyone's aware that BTB10 is essentially a 24/7 operation. However, there are times when the studio is not staffed, and as luck would have it, this issue occurred while it was not staffed. They did address the problem this morning. They have not been able to replicate it, but they continue to test the equipment, so it doesn't happen again in the future. That's the short of it.
Thank you, Brian. Welcome.
Well, I shared a trip with Pinky to Olympia, and Brian went, and we traveled with our two lobbyists. And we had the good fortune of meeting with a lot of the leadership people, especially on transportation and housing, and our border tax for transportation. So I just wanted to let you know that it was a very successful trip. We passed out our COG list. We said we supported everything on the COG list. We've been asked by different organizations to write letters of support for separate items. And what I feel comfortable doing is when we develop something regionally, we obviously thanked them very much for putting the northbound Baker View Onramp onto the Senate's transportation budget. That was extremely important. That's a very quick turnaround. But we had four projects on our list. They weren't all funded. And I agreed that I would write letters to the people that we talked to, Speaker Chop, Judy Clebrin, who's Chair of the Transportation Committee, Hans Dunshee, who's Chair of Capital Budget, which then you get the Public Works dollars. And there was one more person. I can't think. Oh, Jeff Morris, and also Senator, the Senator Curtis King, who's Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee. And they were all aware of, our lobbyists are doing a good job, they're all aware of our projects, both in transportation and policy. And there was some positive talk about revenue sharing, too, with reinstating some of the liquor tax money and looking at revenue sharing for the marijuana. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we followed up and we got a good response. And so I was particularly pleased with that. And it was nice to see Pinky down there. Did you have fun?
It was wonderful, very educational.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We now go to our executive session report. We had one item, litigation, City of Bellingham versus Sang T. Yi, Wac County Superior Court, case number 14-2026702. Staff provide information on litigation matter, direction given, no action was taken. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 601. Final consideration of ordinances.
I don't have the agenda bill. Agenda Bill 20724. An ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending Chapter 4.76.040 of the Bellingham Municipal Code regarding the solid waste fund to include nuisance abatement as an intended use of the fund.
Move third and final?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gene Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lilaquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0. Terry Berman excused.
Okay, the next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be Monday, March 9th, 2015. Meeting adjourned.